Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 2nd. For introductions, my name is Todd Wilchon. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Deb Shore. On my right, Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair of the County Board, Commissioner Bill Avery. From the County Attorney's Office, we have David Durbin from the Clerk's Office. We have the County Clerk, Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. Joining us from the County Board Office momentarily will be the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, and the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Now, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
The copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additional copy of our written material to discuss today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff. At the front of the hearing room, the material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, or minutes. Approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, October 3rd. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, or claims, approve all claims processed through October 10th, 2017.
Move approval of claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is a special presentation. First one is Commissioners' Award of Excellence, August winner Nicholas Vesossik, Corrections in the Category of Productivity. Would you like me to read the...
I'm just impressed you guys' last name very well. Because I can't do it.
I had some help, so would you like me to read the nomination?
Yes, please.
Nicholas Vesossik has been selected as Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for August 2017. Nicholas works as a correctional officer and began working for the county on August 27th, 2012. He was nominated by Mike Mueller, Corrections Sergeant in the Category of Productivity. In his nomination, Sergeant Mueller states, "Officer Vesossik is assigned to the Property Sanitation Warehouse Division at the Lancaster County Adult Attention Facility. His job differs from most as he supervises inmate work crews within and outside the facility walls." Officer Vesossik has a wide spectrum of details assigned to him and his work crews. Sergeant Mueller continues, "While conducting his work, Officer Vesossik not only supervises his inmate work crews, he often assists completion of the work himself. As a supervisor, often received phone calls or letters from the agencies he works with stating what a pleasure it was to work with Nick and his crew. Nick is a fine example for the team he brings with him. They all pitched in to make the day run smoothly. While on work crews, there is no downtime. When supervising inmate work crews, Officer Vesossik is given a set of expectations. While completing these expectations, he does not allow the inmate work crews to sit idle for very long. He will work with the county business, asking for extra details to complete. On April 3rd, while supervising the election commission during slower times, he asks for some brooms and dust pans, instructing the inmate work crew to sweep up and remove excess gravel laid out during the winter months. In conclusion, Sergeant Mueller states, "In every job Officer Vesossik completes, he keeps the inmate work crews active. He completed the work that is expected and most often completing small odd jobs for the county business without even being asked. For these reasons, we replace Nicholas Vesossik with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of August 2017."
So Brad Johnson, Director of Lancaster County Department of Corrections. So Nick, about a year and a half ago or so was assigned to our work crew assignment. So he supervises an inmate work crew. So the 605 moves that we did earlier this spring, he was responsible for that. He oversaw all that mulch that was moved, the road crew, county fair, the event center. I mean, you can go down the list of things that he's been responsible for, and it's really just taking it and run, run with it. I don't think there's a lot of supervision involved, to be honest. The other thing I'd like to point out is he's also been working on some videos for us. He's done an inmate orientation video that we're going to start showing to the inmates. He's worked on a recruitment video that we've been showing out at the job fairs. So he's very multi-talented. I guess, you know, away from work, he's a volunteer fireman for the southwest fire department as well. So we're very pleased and feel very fortunate to have Nick on our team. So I think it's well deserved.
On behalf of Lancaster County, it's my pleasure to present you with this plaque and extend our congratulations. We are lucky to have an employee like you, so multi-talented and obviously well-respected amongst your coworkers and a role model for the inmates. We know that they're going to be moving on, and the skills, the life skills that you teach out on those work sites will be valuable. So again, congratulations. Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, if you have an opportunity to respond, your floor source.
No pressure, right? I just want to thank everybody, both from Corrections, work as a team. There's a lot of jobs that kind of go unnoticed, behind the scenes, that get taken care of, all the way up to admin and to the board that takes care of stuff on the back end for us, to give us that opportunity, the equipment, to be able to do our jobs effectively and take care of that. So thank you guys as well.
And is there anyone here with you today you'd like to introduce?
I've got my mom and dad here. My wife's actually out of town. I want to thank them. That's where I get a lot of my work ethic from and learn to exceed and just do what I can at my job.
That's very nice.
And it's a very important job, so we very much appreciate your...
And your wife can watch it.
Yep, she can watch it on the Channel 5.
Sure she's very proud of you as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next is recognition of Don Colleen, County Property Manager, for his years of service.
Well, Don, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate you on your retirement. My goodness gracious, 40 years for the city, 21 years for working with, for the county. And you know, in those 21 years, Don, you have provided so much advice. I put down, I gave a few notes here so that I wouldn't forget anything. Okay, but in other words, over the last 21 years, you have provided so much advice to the Board of Commissioners, to the Public Building Commission. The oversight that you've had over the buildings has just been tremendous. And you know, as I mentioned at the PBC meeting, you're a tremendous public servant. You are, as what Deb said, a role model, you know? And I think that you have left the PBC in very excellent hands. And that was one of the things, I think, was really, really, it speaks to you, it speaks to your concern, because you said, "I would not," that you would not retire until you had someone that you had, was in your place and who could do a good job. But anyway, you know, you've demonstrated a great deal of integrity, you've had stewardship of the buildings and things like this, you've overseen construction, you've provided much, much advice. And so basically, the whole thing about it was, when you said something, people listened. So, anyway, after this, Don, you can go on with your biking, with your hiking, with your grandkids, with your kids, too. Kids, you know, you always have those. And also, you know, you can do your volunteer work in Haiti and just really enjoy retirement. And so, thank you so very much for doing this. And we give this to you, I'm sure that you have plenty of plaques, but we give this to you as from the Board of Commissioners, and then I also, as Chair of the PBC, say congratulations and thank you, and best wishes for the future.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work the, I guess, 21 years for the county. It has been enjoyable, it's been fulfilling, sometimes challenging, but it's also given me an opportunity to have many great experiences and make many great friends, like all of you and these folks back here that have made my job easy over the years. So with that, I'd like to say thank you all, and it's been a great ride.
Don, I just wanted to add that I hope that all the years ahead bring you rest and relaxation. You've deserved it, you've earned it, it's, yeah, we're in better shape with your leadership, and we will miss you very, very much. So thank you.
Next is number four, public hearing. Class C liquor license application for Newmark Golf Course LLC, 8901 Augusta Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the Class C liquor license application for Newmark Golf Course. Anyone here to testify in support? Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll need to swear in. You want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Correct. Yes. I'm Kenzie Bauer, the manager on the application.
You just want to tell us a little bit about the application?
Sure. We're doing a corporate restructure, so formerly Heimer Golf Course. The parcel that's in the county is the golf course where the beverage carts go. So just on that corporate restructure, I'll be the manager on the application.
A little bit about your experience in the industry?
Sure. I've, I worked starting in 2002, when I was in college, and have just grown in roles there. I was Pro Shop Manager, and then now the General Manager. So, and then 2010, we took over Yankee Hill Country Club as well.
So will this, the beverage carts be beer, or will there be additional liquor?
There is liquor, those 50 MLs.
Okay.
The smaller, like airplane bottles.
Okay.
Yep, there's seven different varieties of those on the beverage carts.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else here to testify in support of the application? Anyone to testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing.
Next is for B. This is a manager application for Kenzie Bauer in connection with a Class C liquor license for Newmark Golf Course LLC, 8901 Augusta Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing for the manager application for Kenzie Bauer in connection with a Class C liquor license for the Newmark Golf Course. Anyone here to testify in support of the application? Anyone testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing for the manager application for Kenzie Bauer.
Next is number five, new business resolution authorizing temporary installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
I'm sorry.
A few weeks ago, we reduced the speed on West Denton Road to 45 miles an hour for the detour in order to protect the road surface and also to, to make it a little bit safer condition, because we have some speeding that's happening on our, on our detour routes. Yesterday, we closed 148 Street to start the bridge to box replacement, and so we are asking that the speed limit be reduced on, on one of the detour routes, and then I'll be back next week with a second request for the remaining detour route.
Any questions for the county engineer?
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the temporary installation, installation of traffic control devices in the county. Any discussion? If anyone has one to discuss this item, they need to come forward.
I guess I didn't die from the tumor. Some guys still have me. Terry Pope Gonzalez, I just want to know who pays for this? Who's going to pay for all this? Because see, I'm having a really hard time that we're not taking care of the corrections officers, and we, you know, I have a hard time that we're making so many convicts. See, convicts do not pay taxes. Now, I didn't realize I'd gotten so fat either. Oh, yeah, it's Fireman Day. But anyway, I don't know if you guys know that I'm married to Marty Moon. I just want to know, who pays? Okay, because if, you guys are broke. You're broke. The governor said, "Out of 22 months, out of 14, you did not make your projections." You're broke. So who's paying? Are you guys giving up your wages? Are the corrections giving up their wages? Are they just getting beat to... I will not cuss, because I'm impressed with you, and not much in this town impresses me. But see, you stood your ground with Andy Stebbin. So this is what I want to say, who's paying? Because I'm getting tired of carrying you guys, all right? And you are making a lot more than those little old ladies that I take care of in my neighborhood and their husbands, World War I, World War II, and Korean conflict. So I don't think any of us up here been to any of those. This one has some white hair, so he might have been. So, and if you've been, you know, let me, let me say, you know, because you know, my dad was, my father-in-law was, all those ladies were. So who's paying? Because those corrections officers, what, they, they, they're the first 100 to Kamza, and out here, get a bonus? You guys are 100 short because you're making that many convicts? Now, you're making convicts. Go next door. Sit there, watch them. I watch them every day, and I'm tired. So who's going to pay? Now, somebody, send me a letter, so when I sit down and talk to everybody, I can say, "This lady..." And please, I thank you, oh, and you know what? You said that it was October 2nd. It's not October 2nd. And not that I want to correct you, but it's like, I pay attention, okay? But please don't move, because I can't see you. Now, I did not get to vote for any of you, because I always have to be in the emergency room. So I just want to know, who is going to pay? Now, do I need to sign? Because I'm upright? I mean, I'm done, right? I really am done.
That's fine, go ahead and sign in.
Yeah. And I'm Terry Ray, so like, you guys can call me Terry Ray. And you know, when you called me Teresa that time, it did not offend me. I think you just assumed. See, I'm not Mexican. Neither is my husband. We just have a Spanish last name. And not even Spanish, it's Latin. So no, Marty Moon is my husband. Oh, and it is Fireman Day.
Thank you for joining us today, Ms. Pope Gonzalez.
Oh, honey, call me Terry Ray, it's fine. It's fine, because see, then we started getting everybody all figured, wigged out, calling me, so Terry Ray's fine. Because I'm going to have to come to your meetings, so, because I didn't die.
Okay, well, thank you. And I believe to answer your question, the funds for the traffic control, the traffic control devices come out of the county's general funds through the budget of the county engineer.
Okay, and county funds are county taxes, right? So it's ta, it's still taxes. Now, the governor said, "Out of 22 months, you did not make your projections for 14." Now, I understand I'm an inner-city kid from Denver, but I know 14 from 22 means you're broke.
County engineer, please explain where the funding's coming from.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So traffic signs, on average, cost about $100 apiece. These signs will come from the Highway Fund, and in addition to that, if we're able to reuse these signs, which often we are for detours, because thank God, detours don't remain up for three years, then we can reuse those signs and get some additional savings.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Do we have a resolution or a motion on this?
Yes, we do. We have a motion and a second.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And Mr. Clerk, would you, could we revisit the prior items on the public hearings?
Sure.
Both the Class C liquor license application and the application for the manager. I incorrectly closed those public hearings, and I will need to reopen them and hold them open for one week. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the agenda. Item number 5C.
Next is resolution in matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County, which remain unclaimed for six months or more.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the U.S. Marshals Service for the use of county firearms range and for training of qualified, qualification testing.
It's, it's actually the one qualified for that.
It's B.
I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding the witness fees, which remained unclaimed for six months or more. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is an agreement between the United States Marshals and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff for use of the county firearms range for training and qualification testing. Term of agreement is for five years.
Good morning, Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. We, we are part of a U.S. Marshals Task Force, and we have allowed them to use our range for their qualification purposes on an annual basis. So it's not very frequent, but it allows them to use our firearms range.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second now to approve the agreement with the U.S. Marshal Service for the use of the county firearms range for training and qualification testing. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 5D is an amendment to kind of contract C-16-238 with OneSource, the background check company, provide employment and volunteer background investigation services. The term of agreement is three month, is a three-month extension from October 18th, 2017, to January 17th, 2018. The cost of county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended contract with OneSource, the background check company, to provide employment and volunteer background investigation services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Here's an amendment to kind of contract C-13-494 with Garcia Chacon Enterprises, Inc., using the state of Nebraska Department of Roads contract HH 1305 for the maintenance and repair of guardrails. Amendment renews the contract from September 1st, 2017. Through August 31st, 2018, the estimated cost of county is not to exceed $6,000.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend county contract for the maintenance and repair of guardrails. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is acceptance of a, of a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Violence Against Women, award number 2017-WE-AX-0013, in amount of $240,000. The grant period is October 1st, 2017, to September 30th, 2019.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is a federal grant, a competitive federal grant, that one of our partners, the Family Violence Coalition authored and then received funding for it. It involves many partners in our community, including the Lincoln Police Department through their victim witness unit, Voices of Hope, and then bilingual liaisons located at the Asian Center and El Centro de las Americas. The goal of the grant is to increase the outcomes of victims seeking protection orders. It also hopes to reach a larger population of refugees and immigrants that we have in our community who are needing services such as protection orders or victim safety. There's also a component in there to help training and to do more threat assessments. You know, in, in Lincoln, we have a threat advisory team, and Sergeant Weary, I believe, with the Police Department, was here a couple months ago, kind of talking briefly about what that is. But I will tell you, it's a group of individuals that come together. The Lincoln Police Department hosts it, and they talk about potential dangerous individuals within the community. Within the individuals that are listed there, that they discuss, 70% of them are perpetrators of domestic violence. With one of the homicides of the individuals that they talked about in that threat assessment group, that one of them was a domestic violence perpetrator that committed the homicide. So really, and you know this as board members, important grant, important services. We're very fortunate in Lincoln to receive this funding.
I would agree with that. I mean, this is something that's very important for the community, and it's important that, you know, we talk about these issues because they're highly important to the welfare of our community. So, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hoyle?
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of the Violence Against Women. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six are consent items received in place on file the following reports for September 2017. Assess or register deeds, clerk of the district court and county clerk. Utilized permits with the following. Number 1597, allowing Lincoln Electric System to install new underground conduit under Pioneer Boulevard, 980 feet, 85 feet southeast of South First Street, there is no cost to the county. Number 1601, allowing Lincoln Electric System to install new power poles adjacent to Rockabye Road. From South 84th Street to South 91st Street, there is no cost to the county. Number 1602, allowing Lincoln Electric System to install a new overhead power line adjacent to Rockabye Road. From South 70th Street to South 84th Street, there is no cost to the county. Number 1599, allowing Unite Private Networks to install fiber optic cable adjacent to Southwest 58th Street from West Otley Creek Road to West Panama Road. There is no cost to the county. Sending a public hearing for the one and six-year road and bridge improvement program on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room 112 at the county city building.
Mr. Durbin?
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I would like to request that items B, 2, 3, and 4 be removed from consent for additional consideration. The board can move to approve the other consent items with one vote, and then we can discuss the other ones.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items excluding items 2, 3, and 4.
Move approval of the consent items with the exclusion of 2, 3, and 4?
B, 2, 3, and 4.
B, 2, 3, and 4, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items excluding items B, B 2, 3, and 4. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchon?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Items B, 2, 3, and 4, we are still waiting for insurance documentation on. We expect to receive that shortly, so we would ask the board to approve these contingent on receipt of the insurance documentation for each of those items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve items B, 2, 3, and 4 on the condition that we receive the required insurance documentation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number seven, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on agenda may do so at this time.
Okay. We are opening up the public comment. Those wishing to speak on the item not on the agenda, please come forward.
Again, hi, I'm Terry. Let's just call me Terry Ray. I'm the founder of the Neighborhood Association over in our area. Right now, today, I'm speaking actually for Al Capone, which is my dog. I have a huge English Mastiff who is extremely mean. She's being annexed. So pretty soon, that's what she will be county, right? She can't get here, so I'll be coming to ask the questions. Okay, this is what her problem is. They moved out there to be in the country, okay, because she's a country girl. Now, I'm a city kid, so I don't always understand about the country stuff, okay? So now, she said that their prices went up high, their taxes and stuff. And I said, well, mine went down. Because somebody, let's not really go there, but the leadership has to start getting it together. And this is why. I don't care what you guys think. It's coming out to the county. Thank heavens that fire in Waverly, right, okay, that all those firemen got there. Because we don't, and we are two blocks from the firehouse. And we can't get that kind of response. So I will start teaching everybody how to do Freedom of Information Act. Now, let's pretend that we're fair, okay, because we all know we're not. All right? Just so you guys understand, I have been sequestered five times in two years. Don't even ask me how to spell it. I barely can say it. So if you know somebody that knows what sequester means, okay, to be fair. Because that's what I am. I am fair. I will come up here. You've got something to say to me, please come speak to me. Now, I can't see you and I can't hear now because of what the leadership in this town did. And understand, I do not like discrimination. And I've never been discriminated so much in my entire life till I got to this state. I don't know where Hershey, Nebraska is. Okay, so wherever it is from Denver, okay, we got pulled over. Every kind of county, mountain you can imagine. My husband was jumping up and down because he had to pee. I said, please let the man pee. What's the problem? Well, he was going five miles over the speed limit. Really? So it takes K-9 units? It takes squad cars? Guess what? We were in a 1986 Camaro. And drug dealers. This was in 1996. So I wasn't quite so fat yet, was I? Drug dealers. I said, really? Well, you know what? Check out the car. I said, I think the only thing you're going to find in there is maybe the bottle that Marty had to pee in because you can't pee on the side of the road. So see, guys, you need to start paying attention to some of the... It's not that hard to be on a board. It's not that hard to make decisions. Like I said, the governor said, 22 months, the state did not make 14 months' projection. I can count on my fingers and know you are broke. And when you do the federal government, okay, let's take a look since you got your new chief of police, okay? How many domestic violence murders have you had? Would you like to know? We have the one old lady who was the first dispatcher, her and her husband, okay? Then we have 66th and Vine, three postal workers, okay? And then we have the latest, the blast. Now, let's call it what it is, okay? An implosion goes inside, an explosion goes outside. All right? Now, guys, my house was pristine condition when I got here. Anybody understand the word pristine? So I'm not very happy with you guys. I have a tumor now because of it. The EPA is in your town. And here, to make the record straight, nobody sent me in on Smauer. I came in myself. I hate a drunk. And especially a stupid drunk. So if you guys had left me alone, I'd have died in my own bed. Well, now, look. Look, I'm out and about. And now, I'm going to go see the kids because it is Fireman Day. And everybody needs a fireman. So I don't, I'm really not trying. I can't hear you, so I don't even know how loud I'm talking. We can't hear anymore. We can't see anymore. Everybody's sick. And guess what OSHA says? It's on Third and Q. It's on First and L. It's five-mile radius is poisoned, and you guys let it all happen. And everybody's known about it. So now, everybody really is going to be known about it. So pay attention, people. Because when it starts happening to you, that's when you seem to really do something. And now, I'm tired. And I'm going to say I'm sick and tired, but I did not cuss. And that's what you need to understand. I do not cuss. So when I cussed, and I cussed that one day, didn't I? I mean, I'm... And to you, my aunt is now dead. They were going to come to you and show you it's not that hard. That engineer doesn't need to make all that money. I don't even know what you guys make. I will be finding out, though. And if you would like to know what I did in Denver, Colorado, I'm going to tell you. I was an investigative reporter for the Rocky Mountain News. I'm supposed to be retired, but I guess I'm back. Now, Denver, we wear shorts in the winter. I don't know why you guys are so cold. But thank you very much for your time. And you're Brinkman, right? Okay. And you've been on a while, okay? And I helped your mom campaign. I did help your mom campaign for you. Bill Avery, right? And the lady of the National Guard, right?
Rome Amundson.
Okay. So, and I don't know anybody else, and you guys are welcome to call me Terry Ray, okay? Because then that way, my people really know, oh, that's our cousin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry Ray. Anyone else wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please continue the agenda.
Next is number eight, the announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 12, 2017, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bell Luxor Studio at the county city building. The county board of commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 17, 2017, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the county city building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the reradcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 10. I'm going to go ahead and start the agenda for the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at this open meeting is available from county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also, in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from County Assessor's Office. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners, or excuse me, the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September 19, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the last Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September 19. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are additions and deductions of the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is certification of the 2017-2018 tax levies. And there are updated versions. Copies of them are at the front of the room.
Yeah, there is one difference between what was posted and what has been changed. And that involves the Eagle Alvo Fire District, and a copy of which is available for the public inspection. And it's also been updated on the website.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to certify the 2017-2018 tax levies. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. And this is for Hepburn Properties LLC.
Good morning. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Register Deeds. This property was inadvertently inactivated by our office. And it happened right before we sent out valuation notices this year. And this property also had a building removed from it. So the value was a decrease. But we want to send this notice because of the fact that it was inactive. No valuation notice was provided to the taxpayer. So this will be a decrease in value notifying them. And they have their appeal rights that they would have had if we had not inactivated the parcel. And they would have received the notice properly.
And so, what, the appeal rights would be the same as the...
They've got 30 days from the date of this notice. But this notice puts them on record that the value did decrease to reflect its vacant ground as of January 1, 2017.
Any other questions for Mr. Gaines?
Move approval of the notice of valuation change. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes for the Hepburn Properties. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next are public hearings. The first one, 5A, is notice of proposed change in exemption status for Lincoln Christian Fellowship, Inc. and Guardians Incorporated.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the notice of proposed change in exemption status. Anyone here testify in support? Mr. Gaines?
Do you need to swear me in, Dan, or...
Yes, thank you.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. These are two properties that had previously been granted permissive exemptions by the board. They've recently sold, so this is just to make the official notice that that status has changed. The first one, Lincoln Christian Fellowship, is actually an improvement on leased land out at the Airport Authority that was a church previously. They've now sold the building back to the Airport Authority. So this is to make it of record that the exemption for the church is now gone. The fact that it's now owned by the Airport Authority will effectively, it'll remain exempt because of the ownership of the property. But this is technically to notify the permissive exemption has been removed. Second one is similar. Guardians Incorporated was a permissive exemption, and it's now sold to a private owner. That property will be taxable for 2017 as a result of the sale.
Any questions for Mr. Gaines? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to testify in support of this proposed change? Anyone testify in opposition or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing for the notice of proposed change in exemption status.
Next is 5B, motor vehicle tax exemption applications. And this includes Connecting Point Church of the Nazarene, Evangelical United Lutheran Church, Girl Scouts Spirit of Nebraska, Good Neighbor Community Center, Emmanuel, Indian Center, Inc., Lighthouse, Lynn Quang Buddha Center, Messiah Lutheran Church and School, and New Bethel Bible Apostolic Temple Church.
Okay, I'm going to open the motor vehicle tax exemption application hearing for these 10 applications. Anyone here to testify in support? In opposition or in the neutral capacity? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close this motor vehicle tax exemption application hearing.
Next is number six. This is action on proposed change in exemption status.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed change in exemption status. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number seven is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number eight is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to County Board of Equalization business, not on agenda may do so at this time.
Seeing no one, I move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that concludes the County Board of Equalization meeting. Have a good day.